I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk, and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk, and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on February ninth, two thousand twenty-four. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Paluza?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting a redevelopment plan titled four thirty-five Broadway redevelopment Plan, prepared by the city of Bayonne Division of Planning and Zoning, for the property located at four thirty-one dash four thirty-seven Broadway, eleven dash thirteen West Nineteenth Street, and ten dash twelve West Twentieth Street, which is identified as block two twenty, lots eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held January seventeenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February fourteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan titled four thirty-five Broadway redevelopment Plan, prepared by the city of Bayonne Division of Planning and Zoning, for the property located at four thirty-one dash four thirty-seven Broadway, eleven dash thirteen West Nineteenth, ten dash twelve West Twentieth, when is identified as block two twenty, lots eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second. And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second. And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Just, Ms. Weimer, this meets with your approval. I haven't had a chance to talk to you yet. I know you were concerned about setbacks, parking, et cetera.
We were, and I see that the attorney for the project is here in the audience, and I must commend him for having put up with me quite a bit. But the project, I'm very happy with the project to move it forward as it is now. It does incorporate some wonderful amenities, not only for the residents of that building, but for the community, such as rooftop area and restaurant, if I recall, at least that's the intended use for that purpose. I think it brings an awful lot to the community, and I think it's a great project, so thank you. I appreciate the deference, but I would vote aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I vote aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, two is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, state of New Jersey, approving a five-year tax financial agreement binding between the city of Bayonne and six seventy-three dash six seventy-five Avenue LLC, for the property located at six seventy-three dash six seventy-five Avenue, which property is identified as block ninety-four, lot eighteen, as shown on the official tax map, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held January seventeenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February fourteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by council member Perez. Mr. La Paluza, will you second?
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, approving a five-year tax financial agreement binding between the city of Bayonne and six seventy-three dash six seventy-five Avenue LLC, for the property located at six seventy-three dash six seventy-five Avenue. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second. And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, three is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances, chapter thirty-three, planning and development regulations, and chapter thirty-five zoning regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held January seventeenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February fourteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances, chapter thirty-three, planning and development regulations, and chapter thirty-five zoning regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second. And that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Row four is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter thirty-three, planning and development regulations, which was introduced and passed at a reading, first reading, at the meeting held January seventeenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February fourteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter thirty-three, planning and development regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second. And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second. And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Row five is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter thirty-three, planning and development regulations, which was introduced and passed a first, passed a first reading at the meeting held January seventeenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February fourteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president giving the ordinance second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
How are you doing?
State your name and address, please.
Omar Al Ghari. I live on twenty-four West Fortieth Street. Okay, so when we saw the article, it was just kind of a little bit of a surprise because we didn't really see that happening in Bayonne. We feel like Bayonne is a little bit different from Jersey City and these other cities. We do it as like a side, you know, but, you know, a side income, but we've kind of invested a bit into, you know, our Airbnb, and we feel like it helps Bayonne. We feel like it helps the restaurants. We feel like it exposes a lot of people to the city. We feel like people come, you know, through the Airbnb and they get to see the city, they get to see all these different, you know, parks and areas, and they, you know, use the restaurants, and, you know, they order out. And, you know, we employ some people through the business, you know, contractors, you know, and cleaners. So we feel like the regulations were a little bit more, you know, too strict. We feel like it limits what we could do with the Airbnb. We feel like it doesn't, I honestly, I don't feel like it affects the economy that much. And really, that's pretty much it for me, yeah. But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else on this issue?
Hi, my name is Keith Hazel, eighty-four, West Third Street. I have similar feelings. I feel like short-term rentals, it has definitely introduced me to, you know, Bayonne. And I actually, I love, you know, the city in terms of a lot of the things that you're able to do, and I know that firsthand about seventy percent of the guests that we have that come to, you know, our Bayonne units, they, a lot of them don't really know, they weren't aware of Bayonne before, but because of the, you know, the way that we have marketed our units, they, you know, they like them, and that's what kind of brings them to the area. And we get a lot of feedback of the great restaurants and different places that we recommend to the guests in the area as well. And so I feel like it really does help. There's a lot of restaurants, like, we, you know, we're very, I've been doing this for about three years now, and we're very careful with who we allow to, you know, to rent with us. I think that our, my main priority is to make sure that our next-door neighbors and everyone that actually lives on the block, they feel, you know, safe in their neighborhood, they feel respected, they don't feel like we're just allowing anyone to come in, and so I think-
Do you live in the same location?
Do I live in the location? Yes, correct.
Do you live in the same location that you're renting for Airbnb?
Um, I have, I have multiple locations in Bayonne.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. And so I, sorry, I lost my train of thought. We, we also help a lot of, we have cleaners that work for us that live in Bayonne, we have handymen that live in Bayonne. I, I check the cameras just to make sure that the properties are, you know, are fine, right? The guests are fine, ensuring the safety. And when I look at the cameras and I'm looking at the different delivery people who are stopping by, right? Even down to the, the door dasher, they're, you know, they get, they get a tip from, from making a delivery, and the restaurant itself, there's so many restaurants, you have so many pizza boxes, there's a lot of revenue made for these, these businesses, all the local businesses in Bayonne, just from short-term rentals. And I think that what Bayonne could really use is maybe a win-win situation, because the reference, what I can see from, for the regulations, it is going to practically ban short-term rentals for the majority of the hosts who are already here, and it will be very difficult for them to afford to keep their properties. But I think that Bayonne could be a city where they can be a win-win situation created, where, you know, you can communicate with the hosts, and we could see what type of hosts actually are suited, you know, for Bayonne, because we really need hosts that actually care about the guest journey, right? Their, their experience, but also the, the neighborhood and upholding that, right? And making sure that we are just, you know, having pride in the experience for everyone, because everyone, I believe, can benefit from this, you know? So that's my take on it.
Thank you.
My name is Tata. I lived in Bayonne for almost four years. I moved here because Jersey City, they restrict Airbnb.
Please state your address.
Oh, address, one thirty North Street.
I'm sorry, what was that?
One thirty North Street.
One thirty North.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, I have, I have two locations, two properties, you know, and I rent out my, one of the unit that I live in to AMB website, and then also I have another location that I don't live there, but also host on the website. And I have guests that like book on off like until the end of the year, and if, I don't know if this is gonna hurt me really a lot by like canceling a lot of them, if there is a lot of restriction, or there's a grace period that extend like six months or eight months, so I can stop them, you know? I know that if I live here, that I can do it, I live in the unit. And also, one of the, like, not one, like, couple of guests that book asking about like Airbnb that they can stay for like a couple of weeks, and then they plan to live here long-term, so, because they have a job here. So it's like bringing more people into Bayonne and get to know Bayonne a lot more, you know? And I just want to express my feeling about just, just, just want to know what's the next step, you know? So I can follow the law that you guys are gonna be pushing.
Well, we will be voting tonight after everybody speaks.
Yes.
And I'm sure the council will have some comments as I do as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
That's the next step.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Caitlin Martinez. I'm a homeowner on twenty-seven West Fifty-fourth Street. I moved to Bayonne because I was raised in Jersey City, and I wanted to come back home because it's a neighboring city, to invest in a community that I'm familiar with. And I found the best way for me to do that is buy short-term rentals. It's been lucrative, as you can see, that all of us are here defending what we have built for ourselves, but that's not the only reason I believe that we're all standing here today. I believe that, I know that the argument is that we are taking away from housing, but I would say that we are hitting a different market. I've housed traveling nurses time and time again. I've housed people who are renovating in Bayonne and need a place to stay temporarily. I've housed people who are here on a project, working for the city itself, paid by whoever they're working for. I believe one of those tenants that I had was working on a two-week project with either electric, or I think, I'm pretty sure it was electric, something to do with, I didn't get too nosy, but they were working in the city. Also, I've housed people who were affected by the flood that we had about a year and a half, two years back. And that's just to say that not only, yes, are we introducing people to Bayonne, because I also love Bayonne after visiting my friends here, I learned to love it, and that's why I decided to move here over Jersey City. But besides contributing to the city's success, because we are inviting people in to spend more money, I also think we're just hitting a different market that we're not capable of hitting if we're, if we ban short-term rentals. I think that there is a dire need for housing for traveling nurses, and if we ban short-term rentals, then we ban nurses from our local communities from staying here, and that's something that I think is a very hot topic. Besides that, my laundromat across the street that just opened makes a lot of money for me, and I'm sure they make a lot of money from anyone else who has a unit, or anyone who stays at my unit, uses the laundromat across the street if they stay there temporarily, because I don't have a laundry in my unit. I pay internet cable, we order food from all the local restaurants, and I think we're just contributing to the city more so than hurting the city. I would hope that you guys listen out for that and understand that there is a market that maybe they haven't touched upon and they didn't even realize they were hitting. And that's all I have to say.
Do you mind if I ask you, are you, when you put your residence or that location on Airbnb, are you renting a room, or do you have a dedicated apartment specific to an Airbnb?
I rent out the whole unit for the most part, and I, I don't really do per room, but if the traveling nurses do need per room, we'll do per room.
So you don't live in the same location that you rent as a short-term rental?
As of now, I do. My intentions were to purchase another property in Bayonne. Most of the properties in Bayonne need rehabilitation or needs a lot of cosmetic work. A way for me to purchase another home, being a single, just woman, at my age, I would say, short-term rental would allow me the income to buy a home and give it the remodel that it deserves. And that is also another thing, you know? I don't have investors.
Thank you.
But it'll be, that's something that can continue to build and contribute to the city. Thank you.
Ali Hassan, thirty-five West Fifty-first Street. Thank you guys for having me. I, some of you may know me, I love Bayonne. I've grown up in Bayonne my whole life, invested a lot of money in Bayonne and continue to invest in Bayonne. Had opportunities to move, and I continue to want to invest in Bayonne. I own multiple properties in Bayonne, and only two of them I do Airbnb at. One on Fifty-first Street, which is the one that I live in, it's a two-family home, and one on Fifty-first Street, which is not even around the block. So both within, you know, a couple feet of each other. I've been doing it for two years, and I've had over three hundred guests come to Bayonne. A lot of people ask me, why are people coming to Bayonne? I've never heard of Bayonne before. People from all over the world, not just the country, all over the world. And they're coming, to be honest, because they want to visit New York City, and they might not be able to afford New York City as a family, a family of four, five, six, eight, can't afford two or three hotel rooms in New York City at three hundred dollars a night, four hundred dollars a night in New York City. But they might be able to afford an apartment in Bayonne for a hundred and fifty dollars a night. That's what we do. We house mostly families in my, in my homes. Obviously, I live in one of my homes, so very careful of who I'm bringing around, my family. And the other one is less than a block away, so I see and get to know almost every single person. We, I like to think that we're bringing a lot, we're doing a lot of good for Bayonne. I love Bayonne, and I don't want to hurt Bayonne, so if there's something that we're doing that is hurting it, I don't want that. We're getting people that are investing a lot of money in the restaurants. The number of people that eat at Fontanya, I mean, I see because I see the pizza boxes, because I recommend them, because they're a block away from the house. And even that, the number of, the amount of business he gets is insane, and they eat at the restaurants I recommend. They eat at the Chinese restaurant I recommend, they eat at the fried chicken spot I recommend, they eat at the pizzeria I recommend, they eat at Cafe Bello, because it's on the block, they use the laundromat. So these people are not just migratory people who are not servicing the businesses, they're investing a lot of money in Bayonne because they're here. They're not just going, they go to New York City during the day and they come back at night, and they need a place to eat, they, they need a place to shop, they need a place to go to the grocery store, that key supermarket, the bodegas. So I just want to point out that I believe that these people are bringing in revenue to the city, and shutting it out completely isn't no one's best interest. Now, I do believe that some regulation is necessary, I think it's the Wild West, I was looking online, there's over three hundred listings in Bayonne today. When I first started, there were, I think, less than fifty. So there, there's probably some bad actors out there, there's probably some people taking advantage, there's probably people coming in from out of town who see the gold mine, the opportunity that we're seeing. Why do people come to Bayonne specifically? If you go to Airbnb today and you look up New York City, New York City doesn't have Airbnbs, and Jersey City doesn't have Airbnbs, but the little radius, the five-mile radius that the Airbnb map paints for you, has Bayonne listed, and you see the properties with the best reviews come up first. So that's why people are attracted and opening up more Airbnbs in Bayonne, because Airbnb is pushing Bayonne, because we're the closest to downtown Manhattan, we're the closest to New York City, it's super easy to get there. I think it's in our best interest to lean into that, to take advantage of it. I'm not saying we shouldn't have regulation, now that we know what an opportunity is for everyone, it should be regulated, and the city should understand what's happening, and there should be some permitting, and there should be some cost sharing and some revenue shared with the city. I'm, I'm pro that. What I'm not necessarily pro is the outright shutting down of everyone if they're not owner-occupied. It's impossible for me to live in multiple properties, right? I mean, you can live in a multifamily home, Airbnb one unit, and live in one. That caps you out at one. It doesn't allow you to invest in further opportunities. I think there should be some potential grandfathering into some good members, maybe some grace periods. The permitting process should look at the history of the person who's doing it. It shouldn't just be, let's look at the property and figure out if we can zone them for this or not. And if it were up to me and I was helping shape the, the regulation, I would say, let's look at the people who have been saying, how long has this person been on Airbnb? What are their guests saying? Two hundred reviews, four hundred reviews, three hundred, fifty reviews, positive, negative? What are the neighbors saying? I understand that this is a concern that is driving a lot of this, neighbors having issues. That's always gonna be a problem, for sure. It's, it's impossible to shut that down. Anyone who comes up here and says, we're not gonna have a, it's impossible. I, I know my neighbors have some issues, because people coming from all over the world don't understand the rules. They don't understand that they can't block someone's driveway, no matter how many times we tell them. They don't understand that you can't, you can't honk at night to get someone's attention or anything. I get that, but I do believe that there, with the positive regulation, the proper infrastructure in place, we might be able to both benefit those who have invested a lot of money into this. Because it's not just buying the home, right? One thing that we should all pay some heed to, not only do we buy the home, we buy all the furniture in the home, we buy all the linens, the towels, the cosmetics, the cutlery, or you are furnishing an entire house, and if we were to shut that down immediately, we would end up losing a lot of money, not just the income associated that's keeping these properties afloat and helping feed my family, just the actual investment. It feels like it got sprung on a little bit too quickly. I'd love to be part of helping make the regulation, whatever it is that you guys are trying to accomplish, I'm sure we can accomplish it. Um, we're just asking for a seat at the table and an opportunity to, to show you that we can, we can be good partners in this and everyone could potentially win. Thank you for listening to me.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, Mr. President, um, quick question, uh, maybe a little naive. Um, what is the average stay for a person that comes to you? Because I noticed you said, uh, you had over three hundred.
Yeah, more than three hundred.
So what, what is the average stay?
Three to four days is, is pretty consistent, yeah. They usually come in on a Friday and, uh, they'll stay Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. That's the most common, some people stay longer, the minimum will ever allow is two, but on average, four is a pretty good number.
Okay, uh, and I, I, I understand you hit a lot of positive points in terms of regulation and stuff. Now, you say you have a pulse on the community, are you getting any feedback from the neighbors in your area that, uh, you have this Airbnb?
I only get feedback when it's negative, right? So I, I, I know when one neighbor is having an issue because they're letting me know, and it's almost always the parking. That's, that's the most consistent issue, it's the parking. I, I provide parking for them, I give them a parking pass and I tell them where they're supposed to park. No matter how often you communicate, someone is traveling, they've come from halfway across the world, late at night, three AM. They don't really understand, some of them don't even speak English, right? We're using translators. The most common issue we get is parking, and neighbors get very upset when you block their cars, when you park over their driveway line. And I get that, and, you know, we try as hard as we can to educate. Uh, and I, I would be lying to you if I said we couldn't be doing it better and we're, we're trying to figure it out. That's, that's the most common issue that I've gotten.
That's the point here, we're, we're, we're trying to figure this out, it's a, it's a growing process and regulations, as you said, it's something, uh, is, uh, that needs to be addressed.
We, for, for what it's worth, we don't get any issues, at least in my properties, on noise complaints, anything like that. We have devices in our properties that both detect occupancy, so we can see how many Bluetooth devices are connected. So I can know if there's more people than there should be ever inside the unit. And we can immediately shut it down and get them kicked out, like Airbnb will allow us. If, if you are not listed as one of the seven members that's supposed to be there, we can get you out of there. So no noise complaints, it actually detects a decibel level and we can adjust it based on the time. We have quiet hours and it sends me an alert, it sends them an automated message, hey, we've, you're being too loud, please lower it. One, two, three, and the third time we'll visit them. I've had no issues with noise complaints in any of my listings because of these, smoke detectors, of course. So there is a technology in place to do it the right way, and I know that because we've been doing it and we have good reviews. What I don't have a great solution for yet is the parking, trying to figure, I know this is an issue for everyone in Bayonne. Parking is just, it's, it's a problem for everyone. And especially a problem for people that have never had to deal with parking before, coming from Texas or California or wherever they are, so. Um, those are some of the negatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hassan.
Let's, oh.
I, I just.
You want to speak to him directly? I was just, I was going to say, if we have general comments, let's let everybody speak first and then do the chat.
My, my only comment is, I, I just wanted to, um, one, um, to thank you for your own contributions to this community. Certainly, nobody could ever question, um, your dedication and your care and concern for the community. So I appreciate that. I, I do, and, and certainly what, what Council President said, we could certainly let everybody, um, offer their comments. I guess that is the one fine line, and just as you said, um, it is, it is the neighbors surrounding these properties. Where our concerns lie, or at least mine, lie, and I, I can't overlook that. Um, for someone, quite honestly, running a business out of their home. So I, and I did want you to know the reasoning behind at least my thoughts. So certainly, Gary, I defer, um, to you and, and we can allow for everybody else to offer their opinion, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience want to come up and make a comment about this ordinance?
Good evening, Tom Slary, eight West Grant Street, Bayonne. I understand all these, uh, Airbnbs or businesses. The question is, are they following the fire regulation codes? Do they have the proper insurance? Because they're short-term, long-term, it's a hotel. That they don't have, they don't have the proper insurance, they can't have it. Last time I talked to Jay Coffey, he told me Airbnbs are illegal. Question is, if they're illegal, why we have them? They have, they have to have the proper insurance. Get the fire department, go into these Airbnbs, make sure they're properly, have all the fire regulations that need. If they don't have it, shut them down till they get it.
And, and, and not that I want to interrupt you, but coming up on one of our introduction ordinances, oh, eleven, is definitions of what is an unlawful residential occupancy, so if you, when we get to that, I'll point that out to you.
All right.
Some of these things that you're mentioning are.
Because I sat down with Jay not too long ago about this, and he told me, you know, we have, there's so many of them in the state of New Jersey. Towns are getting rid of them.
It's insightful that you said that, it's very good.
So, I mean, I hate to say this in front of them, but better in front of them instead of behind their back. We just had a major fire in Bayonne. I have to applaud the, uh, Bayonne Fire Department, Jersey City, C Caucus, uh, I think, uh, North Hudson. Everybody was here, we had more fire department than we needed, but what happens if it's an Airbnb? That was just a regular home, Airbnb, now you got to worry about the homeowner that doesn't live there. And their tenants that probably caused the fire. And if it's electrical fire, I mean, that goes back on them, but the thing is, they got to make sure they have the proper insurance. They have to have the hotel insurance or whatever they have to have, because this is getting out of hand. There's too many of them in Bayonne, and I feel sorry for the police department and the, uh, what do you call it? The fire department, they have to deal with these. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? The reason this came to be is because, as Councilwoman Weemer said, we're getting a lot of complaints from the neighbors. Now, there's a couple of different things that are going on here. You're treating this somewhat like a short-term rental hotel, kind of, in a residential area, it's not a commercial area. Those people who live in residential areas that don't do Airbnb, that own multi-family homes, are renting out on a monthly basis. So there are allowances here. And we had the option of actually doing away with Airbnb completely, which is not what we're doing here at all. So I think you should understand that we're keeping it, we're limiting it. And I would bring the Director of, uh, Planning and Zoning up to explain a little bit about the characteristics of this ordinance. And then, if it's okay with my colleagues, we'll make some comments and then vote. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Council President. So a couple of points, um, you know, kind of hearing the comments tonight. Uh, the ordnance, the proposed ordinance, uh, really addresses, you know, everyone's concerns. Um, from, uh, you know, having, uh, you know, Airbnb's that are pre-existing. There are clauses in there, uh, that, uh, again, you'd have to prove to the city on, um, that it's an operating, um, you know, short-term rental. Um, and also, you know, this ordinance does, uh, address the insurance provisions, uh, you know. Um, we will have to, again, uh, ask for, uh, you know, proof of insurance. Uh, part of it is, right now, if you asked me today, you know, who's in the short-term rentals or how many short-term rentals are operating in Bayonne? The city could not give you an answer, okay? Part of this is, it allows us to, you know, monitor the situation here. Um, allows for, um, you know, the tracking of, uh, again, what, you know, short-term rentals are being used in, you know, Bayonne. It allows us to create a list, it also allows us to, you know, inspect the, again, the buildings, you know, for fire safety. You know, for building code safety. Uh, because again, this, this ordinance is, is never geared towards, you know, people that are good, you know, neighbors, that are good property owners, that are upkeep. You know, ordinances like this sometimes, you know, affect the people that aren't doing, you know, what's, what you and I would, you know, think is, you know, required of having a good, successful business. So when we look at it, again, we're trying to balance, you know, multiple issues here with this. So, yes, it is a permitting process, you know, there is a grandfathered period for us to give us some time to start rolling out the application. We're looking at July first, uh, for, um, you know, the start of, uh, this ordinance to go into effect. Uh, again, gives everyone, you know, some time to, you know, get out the kinks in the process of this. Understand, you know, what it is, tell us, identify, you know, the pre-existing businesses. But also, at the same point, too, allow us, you know, from the municipality standpoint, to start doing the inspections. You know, for our building, uh, department to go out, for our fire department, for our zoning, uh, to make sure that everything is, you know, in compliance with it. And again, there will be Airbnbs that are, you know, grandfathered in, you know, because, you know, the law, you know, changed. Um, that, um, you know, nothing, um, at this point that, you know, we can do about that, but it's.
Can, can I ask you to talk about that point specifically? So by July first, and that was one of the issues brought up, and it was a question I was going to ask of you. This gives a grace period to get all of this information essentially collated and brought into the city and the permitting process. When you mentioned a moment ago, grandfathered it, go ahead.
So, so grant, so specifically, if you look at, um, section two or, or proposed thirty-three dash twenty point two, um, sections H, I, and J, they're the ones that talk about, um, you know, the ordinances, um, that are being adopted at the time of this ordinance passes. And again, of the, the mechanism on, again, having the property owner show us that they are, you know, operating this business at the time of this ordinance. If they don't show that they are operating with, they will have to comply with, you know, the rules of this, that they would, again, owner-occupied to, you know, those, you know, permissions.
It's that, it's that point, that's the question, I think. So given that we have, let's say, ten, let's just, for the sake of round numbers, there's ten units currently operating now. And eight of those units are not owner-occupied, they're owned by one of the other two individuals. Do they, are they permitted to continue operation after July first?
They are, they still have to apply to, to be permitted. Part of the requirements are relaxed because, again, the, the requirements to make them have this obligation changed. Part of the, one of the concerns on this, just from a legal perspective, not giving legal advice or opinions on this. But one of the, the drafting things that went into the review of this ordinance is, you know, post-facta laws, you know, can't change, you know, the situation after the fact and then go after them for doing, you know, something that we may not like. I don't want to make, I want to make sure that this ordinance isn't challengeable. We do that, potentially opens up for some issues there. So it's, again, finding that balance to address it. Now, what I will say, if the existing business isn't up to code or, you know, other parts of it that, uh, you know, are health and, you know, public safety issues, then, you know, we won't be able to issue the permit. And they'd have to get that up into code and, you know, frankly, it would be, we would consider it a different business at that point. So it's a case-by-case basis, but the property owners or, uh, the short-term rental, agents or, you know, a bunch of definitions that we put in there, they have an affirmative obligation to let the city know what these, what units are being rented for short-term rental purposes.
Okay, let's, let's parse that.
Sure.
So who is the responsible party on the city's behalf? I, I've run up against this, I've got ideas about rent in town, and one of the issues is, who's monitoring? So now, who becomes, because you've mentioned inspections, you've mentioned fire codes, regulations, insurance. And this is going to come through the Planning and Zoning Department?
Yes, it will.
And so that department is equipped to create, devise a system for monitoring from today forward or from July first forward?
Yes, currently, right now, we are working with one of our, uh, computer vendors, uh, SDL, on creating a online application, going through all the checklist requirements that the ordinance, uh, you know, proposes. And the application, um, if it's not, the information's not filled out, we won't be able to, uh, continue forward with it. So part of the grace period, too, is for us to also test and work out those kinks. You know, we don't want to, you know, implement the system, you know, right now without having the application.
The application is per person or per unit?
It is per owner. So if, and again, I make that distinction because the permit runs with the person, not with the unit. Uh, and that's reflected in this ordinance, so.
Right, but I don't, Director, I apologize for interrupting, but is that accurate? Because one would think that every location needs its own permit. Every location has to adhere to the building code, to the standards set forth by the Health Department, but not, not by the owner.
Let, let me just clarify that then. So when I say, you know, it is with the, the permit is with the, the person, uh, I don't want to say it's with the, solely with the property. It, it's really a combination of both. In the event, if the property owner sells the property, the permit is not transferable. The new owner would have to apply for it, so that, that's why I just, I want to make that distinction there.
For Mr. Hassan, if you don't mind me using you, um, who owns several locations. Each location is going to have to apply for an individual permit, will have to be up to the city's standards, and will have to adhere to the rules and regulations surrounding Airbnbs at each location.
Yes, and then in the event he sells that property, the permit is not transferable.
It's not transferable.
The new person would have to come in and apply.
So it's per unit then, not?
Exactly.
Or per property, I should say.
It, it's per property.
Right.
Uh, in, in that regard, so, but again, it, it's the short-term rental owner or their agent has to make that affirmative, you know, oblig, that makes that affirmative statement to the city by applying for the, the permit.
Some of the other, um, facts about this ordinance that it needs to be owner-occupied?
Yes, so there, if we just want to take, you have, you know, pre, you know, you know, prior to, to this ordinance going into effect and then post. So once when, if, you know, the ordinance is adopted, um, that it will be owner-occupied or the, and, uh, or tenant-occupied, meaning that someone has a legal vested interest in that property for a long-term basis. They have to then apply to the city for that, they will have sixty days, um, you know, to use that as they see fit through a calendar year, um, to rent out the, you know, the unit or, or their house.
So it's a sixty-day max for the entire year?
Yes.
And that can be done through several stays or one sixty-day stay?
Yes. So again, back to, um, you know, if you're looking for the, um, the citations for that. So that's where thirty-three dash twenty point two talk about those different things. So gives the, um, the blanket statement that it's unlawful to operate a property, contrary to, um, the procedure and regulations established in, um, you know, this section. So does a blanket prohibition, but then it walks it back saying, here are the, you know, the situations where, you know, we will allow for Airbnb. So talks about, you know, short-term rentals shall be per, permitted, uh, to be conducted in the follow, uh, following classifications of the property within the city, and again, it goes, you know, lists six items there. Um, again, dwelling units located in a condominium, uh, homeowner association or cooperative association where association bylaws, master deeds, or other relevant government documents permit short-term rental, and where the owner of the unit legally identifies as addressed with the association of his or her principal residence. Then from there, number two, individually or collectively owner-occupied single-family residence. Number three, two dwelling units within two-family residential units where one unit is owner-occupied, as the term is defined in the section. Number four, two dwelling units and multiple dwelling unit provided that, A, the multiple, uh, dwelling unit is located in a condominium, uh, association. B, the multiple dwelling unit contains three or four, three or fewer separate dwelling units. And then, you know, another dwelling unit in the multiple dwelling unit is owner-occupied. So, uh, again, going through, through these, not to, you know, just kind of read them out loud, there are, you know, that is our, you know, going forward part. We do have to address the other parts, as I mentioned, of, you know, prior. You know, we're not looking to shut down Airbnbs within Bayonne, this is in a band.
So it, this, I mean, it seems fairly complicated, it's been illustrated nicely here. This seems more difficult, for example, than just looking at rent as a whole or apartments as a whole, because now you have to go into specific places where someone might have three units in a building. And so they can rent out those units up to, I think it was, you illustrated three units here, or a two-family home, or units that are not part of a condominium association but are part of something else. And again, the system that we're hoping to put together over the course of the next several months can handle all those different changes en masse.
Yes, again.
Okay, with, with, with one final element.
Sure.
So what is the mechanism for a landlord changing back? So like, if you were to take an apartment and de-Airbnb it, de-control it, as it were, who monitors that?
Well, there's a yearly permit, and you have to renew that permit.
You have to come every year?
So you wouldn't renew your permits.
And that's on the landlord's?
That is on the, the property owner or, you know, the landlord.
So monitoring authority would look and say, oh, uh, Bob so-and-so did not come in on the first of January twenty twenty-five, we should go look for Bob.
Yes, Bob Doe, you know, didn't, you know, file for his renewal, is he, you know, looking to continue with it? If he doesn't, he doesn't have the permit to it, that's a violation of it. And then, you know, there's a penalty that, um, you know, can be a violation that can be issued against that.
Right, but right now, um, I think it was Mr. Hassan, Hassan, that. Right. But right now, I think it was Mr. Hassan, Hassan that informed us that right now there are three hundred available Airbnb rentals. Is that fair to say? Okay. So, three hundred rentals. It is likely that that's going to decrease, it's, I doubt it's going to increase. So, that means the responsible party would be responsible for monitoring only three hundred at best, or at its highest amount likely. And that, I mean, is that, one might say that that's also three hundred more inspections that the fire department's going to go on, because these buildings, and for mixed-use buildings where we have both the owner occupied unit and then a unit where we are going to Airbnb it, is it safe to assume that the entire building needs to be up to code, not just the unit that is listed on the Airbnb? Because one must be in conjunction or in alignment with the other. We can't have, one, one unit is magnificent.
The whole building is subject to the laws.
Exactly. The whole, you know, the, the location as a whole would be subject to the rules and regulations, one would think.
The, so again, for, for the inspection process on that, you know, I could, if you want to look at the alternative right now, the alternative is, we don't know. We don't know where the Airbnbs are, we don't know if they are up to code, if they are a fire safety.
And quite frankly, that's a problem. I mean, not, you know, that we're always going to have different standards. You know, different property owners, some will care more, some will care less, some will maintain their buildings better, some will not. And that's, you know, out of three hundred available Airbnbs, and the handful of, of owners that have clearly invested in the city, invested in, in what's going on, and want to maintain their properties, out of three hundred, you're an army of, of few. And so, one might think that the people that are here today are those that perhaps are likely already in alignment with those rules and regulations. You are the few, unfortunately, not the many. And so, and you're right, it is an area that we do not have a good handle on at the moment, and, and are not as familiar. We don't know the locations, we don't know the homeowners, and we don't know the conditions of, of, of these buildings, and where they are. And that, as another resident said, that puts a strain on every available resource in this city. And we are, we are not hoteling our properties, we are, we are a community that wants residents that care, that, you know, and we, and we don't want to take away any's, anybody's ability to earn an income, that's absolutely not what we're looking to do. But we do have to have rules and regulations that surround these, and we have to have standards that our fire department, our health department, who's sanitizing those locations after a family leaves? Who's attesting to that? Are you, and not that I'm, I'm, Lord knows, I certainly don't work for the IRS, but is all of that being accounted for properly? Are we getting the proper permits? And do we have the proper insurance standards and limits in place so that if, God forbid, something does happen, or someone does fall on the sidewalk in the middle of your property, because if they do, they're suing you and the city and for not maintaining that property and not having the, a proper oversight. So, these are things that have all been a part of our thought process and that are going into where we are today. And as Director Skilander said, the alternative was to do away with the ability to Airbnb in its entirety. And, and that's not what we wanted to do. We at least wanted to give the, the homeowners an opportunity to, to maintain their ability to, to earn their income. And we do want Bayonne to, to be a, a place on the map, if you will, and for, for people to come to this destination. We just want it done in the right manner. I, I believe you, you certainly have the ability to, to get up and speak, Mr. Hassan, if you'd like to.
I actually think we're aligned on... I, I don't want this to come back and forth, so if you want to come up one more time, I'll allow it, but I'm not going to allow everybody to come up multiple times.
I, thank you, Jackie.
I actually think we're aligned on everything the panel's saying. It seems that, that this is, these are folks here who are probably maintaining their properties and, and their buildings in the right way, and are most willing to apply for the permits and allow the inspections. The one part where it is impossible is the owner occupancy. I cannot owner occupy more than one, I cannot have more than one residence. And it was really nice to hear that there would be the ability to grandfather some of these existing ones, as long as you're maintaining the property and doing everything and getting those permits. That's, that's exciting us, for us to hear. One point that is still not clear, either to myself or to, that maybe you guys can help elaborate on, is the, the number of days rule. I don't fully understand that, that sixty-day rule. If I, if I live, it's a two-family home, I live in one, and I have another unit, how can I only be able to rent it for sixty days? What am I supposed to do with the other remaining three hundred days? You cannot both, long-term, I can't find someone to rent my home for three hundred days and then Airbnb it for sixty days. So, I, I don't, maybe I'm not understanding that part correctly, or maybe like, if you are owner occupied, that doesn't apply and...
This is where, when we explain to you that you're living in a residential area, the people who lived there bought it for their residence, not for commercial prop, you know, even though they can rent to somebody long-term, it's you, maybe you're doing the right thing, but there's other people not doing the right thing. And that's what we're trying to do, a happy medium, which is impossible to do, a happy medium for everybody. But I've had just as many people lobby me against it, saying, do away with Airbnb, don't allow it at all. And I, I got an email of somebody who told me a horror story about their stay at Airbnb. I'm just giving you the other side of this, this didn't just come because we didn't, you know, out of our heads, you know, on our own. People were lobbying me. I had people who told me that it was not owner occupied, they rented out the whole summer, they couldn't use their yard, people were looking at them in the pool and throwing stuff over the fence, and they just didn't care because it wasn't their property. There was a, I know there was a couple calls to the police on several occasions about Airbnb, I don't know if they were owner occupied or not, but I know there were some incidences there. This is what was driving this. The one thing I could tell you about the sixty days is, and I've discussed this with a number of my colleagues, that this is something we could look into, and if we feel that this is working, then it's possible that this council could extend that. But we want to see what this is going to look like first, and we need to take a step. So, I think that's where we got the sixty days from, as a viable first step.
Yeah. And, and part of it too, just on, for clarity's sake, for, you know, people following along in the ordinance, it's, the sixty-day rule comes up in thirty-three dash twenty point two E. So, I think it's very poignant to also just reflect that there is a carve-out for Section H for, again, the pre-existing, you know, use of this. But again, af, you know, after that, I think it's, you know, taking the time to really look through the ordinance again, of what you're going to be applied, you know, for. So, again, H talks about, again, if you're owning, you know, operating more than two properties, that would, for short-term rental purposes. You know, it talks about, you know, back to E, that, you know, except that's provided in subsection H of the section, rentals of any dwelling units where owner operators of the short-term rental property is not present, shall be conducted no more than sixty-eight total nights per calendar year, each night in excess of this limit shall be considered a separate violation. So, you know, I, I think part of, again, with this ordinance in front of the council at this point, like, there's a lot of thought and a lot of considerations that went into this, you know, of, we have to take, you know, your rights as a property owner and a business owner within the town. We also have to take, you know, again, the rights of the neighbors, you know, here for this. You know, the city too, just, you know, trying to monitoring this. And then, even on the cost of it for our inspections, you know, it, you know, we have multiple people going out, so there's a cost that the, the city incurs. That's, you know, why we, you know, looked at the permitting fees, you know, you know, for what they are, just to kind of, again, cover fire, building, you know, zoning, you know, even just the upkeep and maintenance now of a new operating system for, on this list. It's, you know, this is a big massive undertaking in a lot of parts. So, I think the thought, you know, went into this, it's just, this is new for Bayonne, this is new for a lot of people, and, you know, outside of a, you know, reading, this is a news article.
This is the first step, like we said, and then, we can look at this and expand, we could, we could do a number of different things moving forward, but I think we should give this a year to try.
For what it's worth, I think we can really help too. So, I think that, that the city might benefit from some of the expertise. Might, you might, I didn't realize you guys didn't know that there were three hundred listings. We can show you some really good places where you can see the data, and you can see the occupancy, and you can see how much money people are making. And, like, that, we, we, we use these tools to analyze our competitors and figure out how to, how to do things. So, if, if it's at all helpful, we would, of course, love to isolate the bad actors and make sure that we're targeting them and making room for the good guys.
Mr. President, Council President, just one, one, one quick note. You can sit if you choose to. I don't want to belabor this conversation, but what we're trying to get to here is, regulation is definitely needed, okay? And what I'm, what I'm trying to listen to here is the fact that we don't know where all these Airbnbs are. And however, what you stated before is that you can go on Airbnb, and there's a five-mile, ten-mile radius, and Bayonne pops up. So, the bottom line, and I just want to go on the record, the fact that we, as a city, we need also that list, because people who can go on Airbnb and come into Bayonne, we don't know where they are. So, that's my biggest, so, regulation is definitely needed, and this is a, this is a growing process. We're not shutting it down. I, I agree, you make some very valid points. Sixty days, okay, workable after a year. Three hundred days, what are you going to do with your property? I understand that, all right? But you got to understand that us as a council, and I, I'm going to speak for me, and I'm sure my colleagues could agree, that, you know, we're not shutting this down. We're not saying no, but you have to be willing to accept an, a work in progress like anything else. And then, it could be a very positive thing. But I'm struggling with the fact that if you know you can come to Bayonne, but we don't know where you are, that's a problem for me.
Right. And, and again, some of those complaints, I have a complaint from a guy who's watching what's going on across the street, and I applaud him for that. You should know what's going on in your block. And he just sees a long, long list of people coming in and out. I'm not, I don't even know if it's Airbnb, but I would think us as city officials would want to know when that's going on and follow up on those complaints. So, anyway, having said that, I think we're ready, if you want to make a comment, and then you're, we'll start, are you?
No, I'm done, I said what I had to say, I'm good.
All right. Jackie, did you want to make a comment?
No, I, I have nothing more. I'm, I'm, I will take into consideration, I think, that if you have reached your sixty-day maximum, and somewhere down the line after we've had an opportunity to live through this, so to speak, if there is an ability to obtain or for the homeowner to have to evidence their rating with Airbnb and what their customers are saying, perhaps on, again, on a case-by-case basis, we might revisit extending your ability, again, on a, on a case-by-case basis. I think that's something that we would perhaps look at and consider down the line. But I, I appreciate your input, thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
I, I agree. I agree with everything except the, the notion that these will shrink, that these will go down. I think putting these rules and regulations in place, and I'm a big fan of regulations of a certain point that, that protect the citizens in the city. But I think after we do this, you'll see an increase. You'll see that, people will see that there's a market for it. Obviously, they, they saw it before there was a market for it, and I think more people will catch on. Also, you know, I think they'll see that the value in having a sixty-day rental if somebody's getting thrown out of their apartment or needs a place to jump into quickly before they find the next thing. This, I think this is going to catch on. So, we need to do this. I think this has a lot of compromises, I think this serves both the landlords and the city. But, I'm curious, this is going to take a lot of administrative effort, as opposed to if you, for example, made a sweeping change to units in the city. This is going to require a lot of distinct and specific legwork. So, I, I believe your office can handle it. I'd be curious to, to see its efficiency up to July thirty-first, or July first, excuse me. So, that's my opinion on it at the moment till we vote.
Mr. Perez?
Like, President, City Council, Gary LaPulusa said, I'm exactly, same thing I heard, is people were complaining, it was a quality of life issue. We had, many times, I have received emails and complaints and phone call. In fact, people were saying, please, whatever you do, eliminate it. But we have an open mind, and we're looking at it with an open mind. We don't want to eliminate it totally, but there has to be regulations to control the situation that's been happening. Police officers go in there, when they can be calling to a, an emergency situation, they have to go there and, and see if it's a noise complaint or whatever it is. One, one individual says that they were looking at his daughter, that the Airbnb people who were occupying it, they said they were gawking at his daughter, young daughter, she was young, and they were being disrespectful to her. And this is one of many complaints that I've received. And this is why we have to take action, and we got to move on it. And we want to work with you, but we can see that we need to have regulations. Thank you.
And then, lastly, mostly you heard my comments already about neighbors and issues of that, parking. Mr. Hassan, if you're gonna, if you're going to be responsible for your tenants, you're the one who's going to have to go out and tell them to move the car if they're blocking somebody's driveway or whatever. So, and it's very, very difficult to know who's going to be a good landlord and who's not, who's going to be a good host for the Airbnb and who's not. The one last thing, Mr. Skilander, before we vote?
Sure.
How does this compare to some of the neighboring towns? Because we had talked about that, but you had not talked about this in public.
So, again, the ordinance is based off of two municipalities that we looked at that implemented this process. And then, as you recall, a couple years ago, both Newark and Jersey City, more specifically Jersey City, had on their ballot a referendum about this question, whether or not to allow Airbnbs in the municipality. And it was a long fought process, you know, you know, even on the New York market, you will see the, the advertisements, the commercials. From that referendum came, you know, you know, this ordinance that ours was modeled off of. There were some court challenges off of that, that's why, again, kind of looked at the middle ground here for it. So, you know, both Newark and Jersey City implemented the process, this permitting process. And again, I think we kind of looked at, you know, what worked best, you know, in both those towns from an administrative standpoint, and again, kind of balancing, you know, the community needs with the needs of the, the property owners. This is, this is a tough judgment call, you know, but there's, like I said, you know, three options here. We do nothing and let, you know, status quo, you know, be the Wild West, where we don't know, you know, potential, you know, public safety issues could come up, you know, so that's one extreme. You go to the other extreme, just outright ban it, you know. So...
And Mr. Carroll?
Yeah.
There's usually a few people on every block watching the neighbors, and you'll find out if somebody's not following the rules.
Yeah.
They'll be calling the city up, they'll be calling the council up, the, the, you know, emergency officials, and we'll, we will know. So...
So, but again, for this one, this is the middle ground where it's establishing regulations, a permitting process. And again, can, could we tweak it down the future and find out if things aren't working? Absolutely. Look, I am not open, I am open to, you know, if it doesn't work, I'm going, coming back to you to fix.
And this council's willing to look at this maybe a year from now and see if we can tweak it, if we're willing to. I'm not going to take any more questions, I think we need to get to the vote. Madeline?
I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
So, move.
And a motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPulusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
So, move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPulusa?
Aye.
Oh, six is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter thirty-three, Planning and Development Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held January seventeenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February fourteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resol, resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPulusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, title, and ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter thirty-three, Planning and Development Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
Motion to close, Mr. Booker. Motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
So move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations, which was introduced and passed at first reading at the meeting held January 17th, was posted in the, posted in the Jersey Journal and post, published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February 14th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez giving the ordinance second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, and ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, eight is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic, which was introduced and passed at first reading at the meeting held January 17th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February 14th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, and ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move. Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, nine is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic, which was introduced and passed at first reading at a meeting held January 17th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of February 14th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Sir.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, and ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
Motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Edward Grimes. I'm with SativaCross.org. We're a 501(c)(3) here in Bayonne, fighting for wheelchair accessibility and for cannabis patients' rights. I have been to literally hundreds of council meetings all over the state, hundreds over the past few years, fighting for disability rights and cannabis patients' rights. And very rarely do I get the opportunity to, to thank a council for, for doing something. And I came out here in the cold to, to thank Bayonne Council. And I'm thanking you for something that probably happened last year at some point that I didn't catch up until recently, but you put a wheelchair ramp in Bayonne High School in front there. I don't know when you guys put that in, but I just found out about it recently. And so I want to thank each and every council member here for your involvement, whatever your involvement was in, in getting that ramp, because it's a very important thing. You know, someday we may be, all be using that ramp. Who knows? I mean...
So the truth of the matter is, you coming to the meetings, they probably watched some of the meetings, but the Board of Ed should be thanked.
What do they?
It really wasn't us, so just...
I'll thank them too. I mean, you know, it was a great thing to see that. I was surprised and, you know, that's all I can say. And maybe I'll have to talk to them about this, but I actually have a, a 25-foot ramp, similar to that ramp, that's just sitting in my garage that I'm looking to donate. It might fit Woodrow Wilson School, it might fit another school, the 25, just like that ramp there, 25 footer. It's worth over 10 grand, I'm sure. My friend demolishes houses, and she saw that ramp. She knows I, I do the ramp thing. She's like, I'm not going to destroy this ramp. She gave it to me. It's sitting in my, in my garage. So if you guys want a 25-foot ramp? If you're curious.
Yeah, I don't think Woodrow Wilson needs it, but there might be somebody else that might hear this and get in touch with us.
Okay. Well, thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Solari?
Good evening again. We have enough, a lot of issues we have to try and figure out. Who has jurisdiction on 440 from Jersey City to the Bayonne Bridge? It's like our raceway. I was there the other night, sitting at the traffic light to go on Fifth Street. Car did about 75, 80, no exaggeration, passed me. My car struck. Goldsburg Drive is a madhouse. Last year, I must have counted four accidents. There was one just not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago. You got Costco coming out, you got Lidl coming out, you got Starbucks, you got chosen few. You got, you got UPS coming up, all their employees coming out. You got tenants down there coming out. I feel sorry for the fire department, because when I, I watched them one day getting dispatched out that way. It took them almost three, four minutes to get around all the cars, because nobody was moving. Nobody has courtesy for our emergency vehicles. Cops, firemen, EMS, they stay there. They think they have the right of way. But if it was their house, they'd be moaning and groaning that they didn't get there in time. We have to try and do something, get some kind of, get the state to come in, to analyze what's going on down there. And it's 5:00 in the morning, you got, you got the speeders, you got tractor trailers doing 60, 70 miles an hour going down 440, because they got to get to the turnpike right away. There's nobody at the turnpike at 5, 6 o'clock in the morning. The other issue I, I have, I have to congratulate Mr. Carter. He had his guys go and pick up after the garbage company that we have. The past administration, yous went after Galaxy Sanitation for being a slob. You went against Roselli for being a slob, dropping garbage all over the place. But we have ANL, who's a well-known person in this town, does whatever he wants, trucks are dropping garbage all over the place, they don't pick up recyclables, because his secretary tell them how many times I call and tell them, they didn't pick up my recyclables. And I tell, and I tell his secretary, well, if they don't pick it up, I'm going to put it out in the middle of the street, so they have to come and get it. But no, Tommy has to send his guys out to pick up after another garbage company. This is the third garbage company that we're dealing with. I know he's a friend, people in this town, I don't care.
He's a vendor like everybody else.
Right.
He's not a friend.
He's got to get, he's got to get after him.
We don't treat him like a friend. I had personal meetings with him because we were discussing his contract extension, and I told him, if this doesn't change, we're not going to...
I went to him personally. I seen Joe. I went to him, I said, you got to, you got to have your guys follow, get followed at nighttime. We had guys doing a mess during the daytime. These guys are making a mess during nighttime. Or is he too busy running around playing Joe cop, Joe smoke cop with his red, white, and blue lights on his truck?
Okay, but stick to the...
No, no, that's what I'm saying. He's too busy doing everything else, but it's, it's garbage company. Because when I called his office, oh, we'll get there when we get there. Oh, you're going to get there, because I'm going to put it out in the middle of the street, you have no choice to come and get it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And it's our Bayonne police will take care of 440 in Bayonne, if I'm not mistaken, it's still the city. So our police have the jurisdiction even on 440.
I know court authorities down there, but they sit, they sit right across the street from Goldsburg Drive. They watch guys making three lanes, making left turns, and they don't do nothing.
But, but Bayonne police do come...
Oh, no, I seen them down there.
On 440. He, yeah, if there's any changes, it would have to be done by the state.
Right.
As far as the state road. But you ask me who has jurisdiction to police it? Bayonne police.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Moving on, it's an ordinance reintroduction, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 024-02, approving a financial agreement with Bayonne JV LLC, the entity for the property located at 175 Avenue Way, which is identified as Block 300.01, Lots 1, 2, and 3, and Block 301.03, Lots 1 and 2, to correct the scrivener's error and reflect the entity's name to Bayonne, Bayview JV LLC. And a resolution fixing March 13th as time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Mr. Maselli, did you want to make a comment about this property?
Yes, so just the blurb there says that we're changing the name to Bayview JV LLC. If you look at the ordinance in front of you, it should be changing it to five urban renewal entities. Bayview, Bayview 1, Urban Renewal Entity, 2, 3, 4, and 5. You have to grant the pilot to an urban renewal entity. So I just, I know the, the blurb doesn't rule, but I want to make sure that for the record, those are the five entities that are getting the pilot approved, and that, that the, the ordinance reflect that and that the minutes reflect that.
The ordinance does reflect that, it's crossed out.
Yeah, right. It corrects Bayview and in one other place it corrects Bayonne, but it is Bayview 1, Urban Renewal LLC, and 2, Urban Renewal LLC, 3, Urban Renewal, 1 through 5, so that we can have each building. So each building that's being done down there, there are four new ones, and then we're rehabbing the Planet Fitness Building. So one, one entity for each one of those things.
Okay.
Yep.
And on that introduction, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, 11 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances for the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations, and it should also read Chapter 35, Zoning Regulations. And a resolution fixing Wednesday, March 13th, and the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Just moved by Councilmember Perez. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, 12 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 17, Property Maintenance, and a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, March 13th, and the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
I'd like to say something about this. Ordinance, one of the things is that it's, it's a quality of life issue, and, and we have to take care of these absentee landlords who are not taking care of removing their garbage and just dumping it out in the street. We expect our inspectors who come in and give us summons, they refuse to come to court. And, uh, we just, we have to put a, a, uh, these absentee law, uh, absentee landlords unnoticed. And it's, uh, a great, uh, ordinance that we're moving.
I vote aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi, I agree with, um, I agree with Councilman Perez. Um, this is probably the, one of the single most frequent calls, um, that we get here at the council. And, and again, many of us are, are homeowners and, and have investment property here in Bayonne, but, um, it is the few that really do take care of their properties and care for our city. And it is unfair to our DPW department and to our quality of life, to the people that are the person that sees to these quality of life issues. Um, it is a thankless, difficult job and, and it should be passed along to the homeowners. So, uh, with that, I vote aye as well.
Mr. Lappalusa.
And again, it's, it's wasted resources if the city has to follow up on that. And I think it's a good ordinance and I vote aye.
O thirteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, chapter twenty-five, streets and sidewalks, and a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, March thirteenth, and the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
And, and just as a clarification to everybody, this also, if they don't take care of the issues, the trash, the weeds, or whatever, then if the city has to go out, this goes on as a lien on their property to cover the cost. So O thirteen and O twelve are a little bit in conjunction with each other. And that's also a, a, a great ordinance to have. And I vote aye.
Thank you.
O fourteen has been withdrawn. O fifteen is an ordinance amending, supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, chapter seven, traffic, and a resolution moved by council member Perez fixing Wednesday, March sixteenth, and the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Sure.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
O sixteen is a bond ordinance providing for various improvements, acquisitions, and installations to the eleven, I think this should be, the Russell Golding Park, and appropriating five million dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of five million dollars bonds or notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof, authorized in and by the City of Bayonne, in the County of Hudson, New, and state of New Jersey.
And Madeline, I'm gonna have, um, our, uh, city planner come up and talk about this and O seventeen as well.
What's that?
Uh, yeah, you could, no, stay where you are. Stay where you are. So that's good.
So what's the next one? Council president?
O sixteen and then O seventeen also with the.
It's the Eleven Street Oval.
Oh, okay. Field of Dreams.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you didn't have these.
No, I'm sorry. You know, Dr. Ryan told me to take one. I thought the people should take it and then there weren't people who took it. Thank you. I just want to thank Donna Mauer, our CFO, for coordinating this. Uh, as you probably have heard, uh, we did get HUD approval for the five million dollars in, in late November. And we also have, um, approval pending, um, our environmental assessment, which is apparently we're going to have done, we think, next week, uh, approval on it. And we'll be able to move forward on both of them. Uh, the HUD grant for Russell Golding is the largest EDA HUD grant in the, really in the area. And, um, it covers a great deal of good things that will happen in that property, uh, which we're very excited about. And, um, we are all also excited about the Field of Dreams Eleven Street Oval, which we are hoping to have out to bid and, um, have in place for the tenth anniversary of our Buddy Baseball Program, which will be, uh, April, well, May of twenty twenty-five. But as these things go, and Director Cotta can tell you, it takes a long time to go from approval and then, um, to go to bid, get the, get the design, engineering. The environmental assessment is seems to be the most important thing to HUD, uh, that that is in place. And, uh, we've been working with both our engineers, both, uh, Matrix and CME, different parts of it. And, um, they're just great projects and, uh, just a compliment to everybody on the council for supporting them from beginning to end. And, uh, I hope you'll be there for the groundbreaking. But I also just want to say, um, your faith in the fact that the federal government will come through, because I know a lot of people think that these grants are not worth going after. They are very intense. But I believe that to take that money off, good things that we want to have happen for the residents of Bayonne without going on the tax base or the bond, e, even though we're bonding for them, we have a source of funding to repay them. I think that's very important because we have a number of projects, uh, that we're doing. But we have to bond for them because you have to pay for them upfront. But, uh, through Sean Kemp and the accounting department, we've been very successful in getting our money back, uh, very quickly. So I thank everybody.
Thank you very much. So that was great.
Just coming from the FDA conference where I had to do the ferry, so.
And you know, this is gonna put a lot of smiles on a lot of people's faces. I'll move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
O seventeen is a bond ordinance providing for various improvements, acquisitions, and installations to the Eleven Street Oval and appropriating two point five million dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two point three million bonds or notes to finance the portion of the costs thereof and authorize, authorize in and by the City of Bayonne, in the County of Hudson, state of New Jersey, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, March thirteenth, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Would like to move it.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole. It's ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C one through C four. Any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
And officers' reports is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and a resolution, any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR one through OR four. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the officers' reports, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Consent resolutions is moved by the council as a whole. It's a resolution ordering the following resolutions to be adopted, cover CR one through CR eighteen. Any questions on the consent resolutions? And on those resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R one is approving the emergency temporary budget number one for calendar twenty twenty-four municipal budget. Would like to move it.
Move it, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R two is consenting a agreement to change the ownership structure of one ninety-seven Avenue Way Urban Renewal LLC.
Submove.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R three is designating the property located in nineteen dash forty-five West Fifty-Fifth Street and designate, and designate as block twenty-eight, lots two and three, as a non-condemnation area pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and authorizing and directing the planning board to, of the City of Bayonne, to prepare a redevelopment plan.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R four is authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed ten million, two hundred eighty-five thousand dollar bond anticipated notes of the City of Bayonne, in the County of Hudson, to the Hudson County Improvement Authority and determine various matters in connection therewith.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R five is authorizing amendment to agreement number CY twenty-one O seventy-one with A and L disposal for the collection of solid waste, increasing the same in the total amount of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars to cover the cost of twenty dumpsters to the Bayonne Housing Authority for the calendar year twenty twenty-four, and additional pickups at the Grammeran High School for, from four thou, forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year to fifty thousand dollars per year, for a total additional amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars for calendar year twenty twenty-four, thereby making the total collection of solid waste calendar twenty, twenty-four, one million eight hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars, for a total contract amount of six million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cent, inclusive of the initial contract term plus the first one-year option. And the additional charges will be reversible by the Bayonne Housing Authority and Board of Education. And it also amends resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash thirteen O seventy-two, authorizing the first one-year extension to correct the Scrivener's error and reflect said agreement number to be twenty-one O seventy-one. Would like to move it.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll.
I'm curious about this. Uh, is this essentially refundable to us? Is the board picking up the tab for this?
I, I, that was my exact que, I was just wondering why is it that we are covering the cost of?
So this comes out to a net zero for us in the end.
Yes, we have a shared service agreement with the Board of Ed and the Housing Authority.
And the Housing Authority?
Yep, and finance bills them. And it's even listed separately in the budget. You'll see the revenue that comes in, and then we offset the cost.
By the, okay. Thank you, Donna.
There was some increases to the contract price, and so everybody involved gets an increase as well, which is why we're doing this.
Yep, okay. That's great. Thank you.
Where we up to, man?
Yep.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R six is authorizing the first one-year extension, it's amending resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash thirteen O seventy-three, authorizing the first one-year extension to agreement number, calendar year twenty-one O seventy-one, to A and L disposal LLC for the recycling collection services for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for an additional amount of one million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars to correct the Scrivener's error and reflect said agreement number to be calendar year twenty-one O seventy-one.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, R six, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Ms. Perez, Mr. Perez. Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R seven is directing the director of planning, zoning, and redevelopment to investigate the property and impact of establishing certain setbacks in connection with new multiple, multiple stair, story buildings.
Move it. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R eight is approving the budgetary appropriations, appropriations reserve transfer number one in the calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Submove.
And second?
Second.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R nine is awarding the contract to All American Ford for the purchase of two twenty twenty-four Ford Explorer X, XLTs or equivalent for the bid price of one hundred and two thousand ninety-five dollars.
Submove. Second.
Uh, resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R ten is awarding the contract to All American Ford for the purchase of four twenty twenty-four Ford Police Intercepted Utilities SUVs or equivalent for a bid price of one hundred eighty, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
R eleven is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute, authorizing and directing to execute an agreement, amendment to agreement CY twenty-two O fifty-one with jobs for blue for police extra duty administration services for a period commencing March first, twenty twenty-four, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, under the same terms and conditions.
Move it. Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
And I have several add-ons. The first one is amending resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash thirteen O ninety-nine, which authorizes an agreement with, with Richard and Campassano for professional legal services to represent the zoning board at any and all meetings and to vent, defend any and all actions or, and other matters impacting the zoning board to correct the amount from the zoning board litigations to not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Add two is from the Honorable James M. Davis, appointing and reappointing the following individuals to the planning board.
I'll move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Add three is appointing, reappointing the following members to the zoning board of adjustments.
I'll move. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Add four is amending resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash thirteen dash O thirty-six, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Jersey Elevator for elevator maintenance and repair services for various municipal buildings for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for a total contract amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, to amend the same to remove all references to the Bayonne Public Library, the amount payable by the Bayonne Public Library, and the account chargeable for the same. Also, to increase the total contract amount to not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Five is authorizing the extension of procurement period for the procurement of HVAC services from inline air conditioning through the co-op pricing agreement number sixty-five M, S, M C E S C C P S with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for a period of one year commencing January first through March seventeenth, it should be January first through March seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, for an additional amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Add six is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation to provide nutritional feeding program for the senior citizens for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the County of Hudson Department of Health and Human Services Area Agency on Aging.
Move it. Second.
Six. And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Hi.
Weimer. Add seven is correcting a Scrivener's error in resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash thirteen, one-ten, adopted on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, authorizing and directing the planning board of the City of Bayonne to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether the certain property located at eleven dash thirteen, West Forty-seven, nine seventy-three dash nine seventy-five Broadway, nine seventy, nine seventy-nine Broadway, nine eighty-three dash nine eighty-seven Broadway, and twelve West Forty-Eighth Street, which is designated block seventy, lots nineteen, twenty, twenty-one point O one, twenty-three, and twenty-four, as a condemnation or non-condemnation or non-condemnation area of redevelopment.
I'll move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
No, I won't support the condemnation element.
I, do we know anything about, do we have a little more information on this? I, that didn't sound familiar to me at all. I'm sorry, Director.
Again, uh, thi, this ordinance, uh, oh, sorry, this resolution, uh, these are the two, um, for, uh, old Holiday Tree and Trim site and, uh, the old Avante's, uh, site up on, uh, Broadway and Forty-seventh Street. Uh, when we were looking at the, um, actual ordinance and the minutes, uh, adopted, um, there was a, uh, a Scrivener's error in this regard that, uh, the resolution got copied and past. You know, it was the same for it. Um, this is again reflecting, um, the intent for those conversations that night that these are for, again, the, the Holiday Tree and Trim site for one, and then, um, the avenues, uh, on Broadway, the old, uh, I know what, the Avanti Restaurant, um.
Used to be the ceramic place years ago.
Go, yes.
But these are for, these are to correct lot, block numbers, right?
These are just to correct, right.
Because the ordinance says condemnation or non-condemnation doesn't, it doesn't specify one or the other.
No, and, and again, it, the initial intent from those resolutions, um, on that were directing the planning board to study either option. Okay, so it's still giving the planning board the discretion on, you know, what they see fit for it. Uh, so if it, if they find that condemnation, they will make that recommendation, you know, back to, uh, the city council, um, and vice versa. If it's non-condemnation, they will have to make that recommendation, but you're giving them the option to investigate it.
Okay. And the Scrivener's error is basically just a lot of block.
Yes.
Okay. And I, I think we're reading on some additional information on those, aren't we? The two Holiday Tree and Trim documentation we were.
Yeah, we, we did provide that in December, and the council voted in favor of these. These are just to correct mistakes.
The, yeah, the letters were checked out.
If you might, you did vote yes on these.
No, no, I know, well, because we went through a very rigorous process there that.
There was. Yeah.
Several months. But, um, did that, did, did that notice go out?
It did. And we gave you copies of that in December, uh, right before the meeting, that, that everyone reviewed. And, um, I believe everyone, I think it was a four to one vote. Uh, but yeah, tho, tho, we definitely did all the notices, everything that you requested of us. This is just to correct, it was really just a copy and paste mistake.
I, I remember speaking on it i, in favor of, not that I'm in favor of it, but I, I remember commenting. But I know we did go through that rigorous process.
We did.
Um, I was, my, my curiosity, and I thought we had spoken about, um, how, how that was received.
By, by the property owner?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think the property owner basically told us she'll, she's got a timeframe that she's got in her head and nothing's gonna make her move a little faster, that she's gotta work it out and she'll get to it when she, I mean, I'm paraphrasing here, but she'll get to it when it's good for her. And it's sort of, it was very discouraging after we told you that. She asked, how could that be? I want to do this, you know, the way I want to do it. And so her reaction wasn't what we were hoping, but it's what we expected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Add seven also is correcting a Scrivener's error and it was from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, it's authorizing and directing the planning board of the City of Bayonne to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain properties located at thirteen East Thirty-third, seven thirty-four dash seven fifty-six Broadway designated as block one forty, lots two, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine point oh one, sixty, sixty-one and sixty-two constitutes a condemnation or non-condemnation area of need of redevelopment. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
No.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
And, and again, this is correcting a Scrivener's error.
Right.
Aye.
And Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And my last one is authorizing the Director of Planning, Zoning and Development to perform an analysis of the city's master plans, zoning, planning, noise and other ordinances to ascertain if there are changes that can be made to improve the quality of life issues attended to residents' homes that are in close proximity to commercial and industrial properties. Would like to move it.
I'll move it, I just want to clarify, that's not the next in line, right? There's another, number three or what, are we, six, seven?
Number three, it looks like the same as number two, the same addresses.
So this is, this is about having Director of Planning and Zoning look into making those changes and the master plan, et cetera. I just want to make sure I'm voting on the correct thing.